You're good to go.
Okay, I have the time at 6:34 PM and I'd like to call the meeting to order. And Renee, if you could please call the roll.
Ms. Bayhan?
Yes.
Ms. Zink?
Present.
Mr. Beck?
Here.
Mr. John? Mr. Daniels? Mr. Jablonsky?
Here.
Ms. Wilifford?
Here.
Mr. McDaniel?
Here.
Ms. Byrd?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Before we get started, I just want to give everybody a heads up. I've got a little bit of a sinus allergy issue and I may lose my voice. In which case Commissioner McDaniel has offered to take over in my stead. So I apologize in advance. I've got some lozenges as I work through that. Moving to our consent items. Does any member of the commission wish to remove any item from the consent docket?
I have some questions about, about a couple of these. Is now a good time for it?
How about, I should have, I'm sorry, read through the items. I'll read through each of the items and then you can let us know which item you'd like to maybe bring to discussion. Item number two, TNP dash one six seven, approval of the April 8th, 2021 Planning Commission Regular Session Mission Meeting Minutes. Item three, COS 2021-12, consideration of a Norman Rural Certificate of Survey submitted by McGregor Ranch LLC, Macfax Land Surveying P L L C for Gordon's Acres for approximately 30.125 acres of property generally located at the northwest corner of East Lindsay Street and 120th Avenue Southeast. Item four, COS 2021-13, consideration of a Norman Rural Certificate of Survey submitted by Kirk and Teresa Williams, by William Sullivan for Blackberry Ridge for approximately 29.94 acres of property generally located on approximately 664 feet north of East Tecumseh Road on the west side of 113th Avenue Northeast Private Road. Item number five, COS 2021-14, consideration of Norman Rural Certificate of Survey submitted by Diane Brown Trustee Greg Skinner for Beauchamp Meadows for approximately 10.1 acres of property located on the east side of North Porter Avenue, approximately half mile north of Franklin Road. Apologies, I didn't do that sooner. Now, Mr. Jablonsky or would any other member of the commission like to remove any item for the consent docket?
My question's more procedural, so we may not need to remove them. Under the improvement program, two of these mentioned covenants, but the covenants are still being reviewed by the city staff. So my question is, if we approve this and it goes on to the city council, is that approval perceived by city council as we approved everything, including the covenants, which we never saw? Or how is that communicated to the council?
I'm happy to answer that for Commissioner Jablonsky. And as far as the two certificates of survey that have covenants, those are approved at, well, sorry, they're reviewed as to form and those aren't really subject to a separate vote. So it has been the policy in the past to allow them to be brought during the process. They have to be in place though before things are filed of record. And that's actually all that our code says is that they have to be in place before filing of records. So that's how we've done it. So to answer your direct question, no, I don't think that your approval would be perceived as a specific approval of those covenants.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions or any other items that we should bring to discussion to remove from the consent docket? Does any member of the audience wish to remove any item from the consent docket? And if so, announce which items are being pulled to be discussed in their regular order. And I'd like to take a motion.
So move.
McDaniel, second.
And I'll take a vote.
Ms. Bayhan?
Yes.
Ms. Zink?
Yes.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Ms. Wilifford?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Byrd?
Yes.
The motion carried seven to zero.
I already noticed some of you doing this and thank you in advance for stating your name before making any comments or questions for the record. And since it's on a Zoom meeting, muting in between when speaking. Moving to our non-consent items. I've got first item six A, R 2021 dash 101, Jeffrey R's D B A Amphibious Powersports L L P, request amendment to the Norman 2025 land use and transportation plan from country residential designation to mixed use designation for approximately five acres of property located at 3766 East Robinson Street. And item six B, O dash 2021-37, Jeffrey R's D B A Amphibious Powersports L L P, request rezoning from A to Rural Agricultural District to PUD planned unit development for approximately five acres of property located at 3766 East Robinson Street. And I would love to take a staff presentation.
Good evening, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so as you stated, we've got two items. We've got a land use plan amendment as well as the companion rezoning item for the 3766 East Robinson Street. Mr. RC is requesting to amend the existing land use in this area from country residential to the mixed use designation, which if approved, this would carry the mixed use designation as you see there, as well as the rezoning request. He is requesting to amend the A2 to a planned unit development. His subject tract here is across, it's on the south side of Robinson. We've got A2 on either side of him, across the street on Robinson, we've got the residential estates development. To the east, you'll see another PUD that was done in 2016. That is for a residential treatment facility. Clients go there and they sleep. I mean, it's a living facility. They stay there. And then the additional PUD to the east of that was done in approximately 2006. That was when the previous owners had the entire area and it was actually a, started out as a bed and breakfast and then it went to a wedding event center type setup. This is again, the subject tract. You can see the residential properties surrounding this as well as there's a church to the west there you see in the blue. And then there's also another church to the east. Here's the subject tract. You'll see on the aerial here, there's an existing driveway on the east side of his property. Part of this PUD, part of the agreement is that his driveway will actually be located across from Bryant Circle. It will not be, you know, on either side of his lot there. It'll be directly across from Bryant Circle. This is looking to the, to the north. This is looking at his property there from Bryant. So this would be looking to the south. This is looking back to the west. You can see the top of the church and then there's another house there in the distance. And this is looking back to the east. And then this is the property itself. The applicant's proposal is to have some sort of a mixed use out there on this property. Eventually he does want to have his home out there, but you know, I'll let him expand more on his timeline and his proposal and everything, but he wants to be able to run his business out there as well as at some point in the future, build a house. We did receive a protest across the street there on the north side of Robinson, which takes the protest to 4.4%. And we present the land use plan amendment request, which is resolution R 2021 dash 101, as well as the ordinance O dash 2021 dash 37 to Planning Commission for your consideration. I'm happy to answer any questions. Mr. RC is on the Zoom call with us as well.
This is Commissioner Beck. So in terms of mixed use, you say he wants to eventually do a house, but there's been nothing specific said about what kind of business that he wants to put out there. So is that something you want him to answer?
I do, I think that would be better. He's more familiar with his proposal and I think he can answer those questions better than I can.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Are there any other questions from the commission's for staff? Okay, seeing none, I'd love to take the applicant's presentation. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jeffrey. So the, the business is a motorcycle repair shop. I do jet skis and dirt bikes mostly. It's, you know, repair, but it's a full kind of dealership where we buy them, sell them. We build them. We have a lot of like custom builds. And I mean, that's, yeah, that's the main part of it. If you see the PUD application, there's like dry dock storage is one thing, one of the proposed uses just because, you know, it's a, that could be a service that the dealership offers. We have a, sorry, what was that? Nevermind, I thought it was, um, yeah, that, that's what it is, is just a motorcycle repair shop slash dealership. It's a small, it's, and it's not like, there's not a lot, there's not a sales lot, only a parking lot. If you look at the site plan, it's kind of a more, all the storage of vehicles and everything is recessed into the property.
This is Commissioner Beck again, and I think this question goes back to the city staff. I noticed there was a floodplain or a creekway in the original map that you showed us. And I'm curious as to, especially now that I know what's going to be out there. Typically, building in the floodplain requires, there's floodplains and floodways. So what have we, what have we got there, staff?
There is some floodplain on his property. Any work that he would be doing in the floodplain, he would have to get permit from the floodplain. Also, can I answer a question? Oh. Okay. So we've got Todd McClellan, if you have any questions about the floodplain. But yes, anything that happens in the floodplain, he would have to get a floodplain permit before doing anything.
Okay, thank you.
This is Commissioner Jablonsky. I have a few questions. On item six A, there's a number two that reads, there's a determination that the proposed change would not result in adverse land use or adverse traffic impacts. But then it goes on to say that this is uncertain. Am I, am I misunderstanding something? It looks like we aren't satisfying that condition for six A.
Well, so the applicant can address any questions on that as well. But you know, at this time, we're, we don't know his business plan. So we can't say how many clients would be coming to his facility and traffic or delivering of any equipment or vehicles or anything, but Mr. RC can answer some of that as well.
As far as traffic, it was, you're talking, I mean, maybe one or two extra people other than myself a week. You know, I may have future employees. If I did, it'd be like one. So, you know, really, I wouldn't say it's any more than residential.
This is Commissioner Wilifford. Your parking proposal says it's going to be gravel spots, but the zoning ordinance calls for paved, all weather surfaces, asphalt, concrete, cement, on and on. So it's completely against the zoning ordinance. Do you plan to do something different or are you sticking with the gravel parking?
I'd like to get it approved to do gravel as well, just because of the, the length of the driveway and, and everything. This would be too costly for me.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Yes, this is Commissioner McDaniel. Talk a little bit about the fencing. Obviously, if you're going to be holding bikes to be repaired or, or things to be repaired, will that be a hind of fence? Would it be, how will that be perceived to maybe someone coming down the road or for the residents across the street?
Yeah, so directly across the street, you won't be able to see any, anything just because of the natural landscaping, how there's a hill kind of in the front of the property. Everything that's stored is even outside is kind of in the back behind the barn shop area. And you can't see that from the street at all. There is a vantage point, I'd say, my neighbor to the west, yeah, where, you know, you can see down into those areas. About my neighbor to the west, his property and his neighbor to the west are the only properties that can see these areas. And they can only see one of the areas. The back storage area is so far down and hidden by trees, you can't see anything. So that the areas that could be seen by, you know, potentially those guys and maybe as they're driving, you'd really have to be looking if you're on Robinson to see it. You could see behind the barn, which wouldn't be any, any bikes or jet skis that are being stored. However, we do, we would have bikes and stuff that, you know, are dropped off by customers kind of pending, you know, once they're done getting worked on inside the shop. Because the, the ones that are being worked on will be going inside the shop and then they'll be brought back out, you know, and left outside to be picked up. So there'll be a kind of short-term spot where there's, you know, a lot of things sitting short-term.
And one, one follow-up question. Do you plan on having inventory out front for sale to the general public?
Not, so in that same area I just described, outside of the shop, yes. But that's still not where you can see it from the side of the street. I keep, I, I'm not having anything, you know, propped up on the side of Robinson, no lot or anything with just a bunch of inventory for sale.
It's Commissioner Wilifford again. And it says it's unclear what your hours of operation will be. Have you determined those yet? Is my first question. And my second question is, you, it says you will need to seek a license to become a used motor vehicle dealer. What steps have you taken or are you taking to get that licensing?
Well, one of the requirements for the licensing is, you know, zoning. So I haven't taken, I haven't filed any application or taken any steps towards that, you know, other than looking at the requirements. Hours of operation, Monday through Friday, nine to five.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Beck. I've got a couple of questions. One, you know, of course, when you say dealership and repair, I know how dealers and repair shops work and people bring in something to get fixed and then they take it out to test it and drive it around. You say you might have one person there during the week, a repair person. But be realistic and be honest about how many motorcycles you plan on having in there at any given time. Because there's a lot of dirt bike riders out there that are always getting new dirt bikes. So I'm having a real hard time with this because I hear lots of motorcycles running up and down the roads, getting tested. And you got to prove me different.
I'm not sure how many of those are actually being tested. We have, so I'll, right now, in inventory, I have two 450 dirt bikes. Those are, you know, mine, because right now I can only buy them and own them myself. I can't do it with customers legally. So most of them are jet skis. I'd say 80% right now are jet skis. Now that will fluctuate. I do anticipate fluctuation. You know, seasons change. But right now I only have two dirt bikes and.
Okay, thanks.
So realistically, I mean, I would anticipate maybe, you know, one day out of those, out of the week, at the most, you have actually one getting test drove, maybe a customer's picking it up. You know, if it's a, if it's a repair job, that's only one test drive. And the amount of repair jobs we would get on a bike is being far between and, sorry, a bike, a dirt bike. We also do, you know, sport bikes, road legal things.
Any other questions for the applicant? Like to open to audience comments. Just a reminder to please state your name and your address if you are planning to make a comment. And the time will be limited to three minutes per person. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have one person here that's just going in to speak.
I am Larry Toothacre, co-owner with my wife of 1,200 Bryant Circle located on the northwest corner of Robinson and Bryant Circle, directly north of the property in question. I am protesting changes in land use and transportation plan and rezoning. I understand that we are the only written protest that's been submitted. And I don't know if anything I say will be cogent enough or persuasive enough, and I'm going to give it a shot. So why protest? First, noise. We built in 1997, 98. We considered the noise and the sources of the noise when we bought our lot. The first source of noise was Robinson Street traffic. It's muffled, it's fleeting, it's temporary. You stand out there, it might last 20 seconds. Second source of noise, Tinker Air Traffic. I think they use Bryant Circle to line up their approaches to their great big old jets. But to us, that's okay. And I have a side story, but it's relevant. I was teaching at Osan Air Force Base as an OU professor 10 days after 9/11. And the flight line at Osan is so close to the buildings that when a jet plane takes off or lands, you can't hear yourself speak, much less hear anybody else in the room. So you stop. Such occurred, I stopped, a great big burly Air Force Sergeant stuck his hand up in the air. And he said, sir, he said, you know what that's the sound of? And I said, no, sir, what's that the sound of? And he said, freedom. Now, it is relevant because the noise for Tinker was present when we bought our lot and we built, as was the Robinson Street noise. We agreed to it, we understood it, it was there when we bought. The proposed changes add noise that we did not agree to and don't agree to. And the testing of those motorcycles and those engines is loud, it's noisy, produces smelly stuff. You can look at our, our letter and a note there, the photo of the property was not up to date. There are dirt ramps built on that property right now and we have seen dirt bikes using them. The bigger picture is why is there a plan for zoning? Why, why are these things in Norman? And it's not a rhetorical question. The city of Norman has those in place for order, not chaos, for cohesive growth, for acceptable community. It is now country residential homes, not businesses, not commercial. There are other places in Norman where a business or commercial is already zoned that way. Jeff could buy such a place or rent it with no problem. But the current property, the property in question is currently residential, it's homes. Why change the plan? Some people would argue that rules are made to be broken, arguing to change plans and zoning. No, rules are made to be followed and good plans should be followed. So we got three problems, noise, the changing use of the property in our letter, and the idea of it's a plan. I'm the only.
I'm so sorry, we are at three minutes. Thank you so much for your comments.
Can I make my final point?
I'm so sorry, but we are limiting to three minutes per person, but we do very much appreciate your comments. Thank you.
I would note, Jeff got more than three minutes.
Are there any other audience comments? Seeing none, I would open to Planning Commission discussion.
This is Commissioner Beck. I share those concerns. It's one thing to go from agriculture to residential or medium density residential. But bike repair, bike sales, bike ramps, because that was going to be one of my questions that came up. And the fact that the owner across the street said there's ramps out there, I, I just don't see the mix. I don't see this as being the appropriate rezoning to fit into the neighborhood.
Would now be a good time to address?
Nope.
If you could please mute your mic while we do our Planning Commission discussion.
Commissioner Wilifford, I also am not in favor of this proposal. I applaud the thought and plan for the business. I feel like it is not fully thought out and not fully prepared. And I think that the impact on the neighbors is not right. I agree with the gentleman that came to speak that they knew about the noise that was there when they bought their home. But it's another thing to bring in noise to the neighbors that are already there. And I just, I just don't think that it's right or fair to do to people that are already there. I'm just going to add my support for Commissioners Beck and Wilifford because I, I also feel the same for those neighbors and I appreciate the neighbor that actually made the time to come in to speak to us to tell us the same.
Any other Planning Commission discussion? I'd love to take a motion regarding the item.
Commissioner Beck, so move?
Is the move to approve?
Well, that's what we're moving for. I mean, you vote yes or no for an approval. That's the standard way of doing it.
Got it.
Ms. Bayhan, a second.
Any additional discussion?
I need a. Um, I need to address something on the noise specifically. You can go stand out there any day of the week and there's, I'm not the only one who's operating-
Point of order. Point of order, Chairman. I believe right now only the commission should be discussing. Am I incorrect?
That is correct. I'm gonna have to ask that you please leave your line while we continue on with our order. Any other planning discussion? Okay, I'd love to have the members cast a vote. If I could get a roll, please, Renee.
Ms. Bayham?
No.
Uh, Ms. Zink?
No.
Mr. Beck?
No.
Mr. Jablonsky?
No.
Ms. Williford?
No.
Mr. McDaniel?
No.
Ms. Byrd?
Oh.
The motion failed, zero to seven.
Okay, moving to our next item, A, A, eight, I'm sorry, eight, A, R two zero two one dash one one four, Susan Draper requests amendment of the Norman twenty twenty-five land use and transportation plan from industrial designation and institutional designation to office designation. I'm sorry.
I'm so sorry, where are you? On your, we're on seven.
I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
Apologies. Moving to item seven, O dash twenty twenty-one thirty-eight, Peter Petromelli requests special use for dwelling units with four or more bedrooms for property zone CCFBC Urban General Frontage located at four thirty South James Garner Avenue. Apologies, everybody. If I could take the staff presentation.
Bear with me, sorry. Can everybody see the screen? Am I good to go?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so yes, we have the item for, uh, Mr. Petromelli for special use for four or more bedrooms and this is within the center city form-based code area. Uh, back in, uh, two thousand and nineteen, we had administrative delay and a lot of the discussion occurred during that administrative delay. One of the things that came from that was the requirement to come forward to planning commission and city council to request, uh, an approval for special use for four or more bedrooms in the developments that are being constructed within the center city area. This subject tract is located here on James Garner. It's situated between, uh, an existing development there at the corner of Sims and James Garner as well as the CCPUD that's south of this, uh, which is a, a mixed building. It has a retail office on the bottom and then it has residential units on the top and the applicant has the opportunity to now uh, infill on this lot with, uh, the new development. He has, uh, proposed, uh, six units with four bedrooms each. And, uh, this is the subject tract. This is the area. You can see on the north side there, there's the existing uh, multi-unit, um, buildings as well as the pad to the south and then there's also, um, rock bar, I believe is what it is. It was included in that, uh, pad there on the south side. This is the vacant lot. You can see the building that was under construction there on the south. This is looking back to the west where the vacant lot is located. This is looking to the south. This is the mixed building that's there on the right of your screen. And this is looking back to the north to those existing, uh, multi-unit buildings as well. Forever tracks are on the other side, on the east side of this across, uh, James Garner there. Um, the applicant is, uh, you know, really trying to, originally he had come in with, uh, four units with, uh, three bedrooms apiece and, um, and a, a den area. Knowing full well that, you know, the possibility of those, that den area being used as a bedroom as well would have actually put him, uh, you know, out of compliance with the center city form-based code. So he went back and, um, redeveloped this and redesigned it and has now come forward with this request to you uh, for the, for the four, four-bedroom unit design. The applicant is here, um, he can go over some of this with you and discuss through, uh, the units and the bedroom counts and the design and parking and such. But, uh, you know, staff is happy to present the ordinance, uh, O dash twenty twenty-one dash thirty-eight to you for your consideration and happy to answer any questions, but the applicant is here as well with questions.
Uh, this is Commissioner Beck. My first big question is parking. We know that he's got enough parking here for these number of bedrooms. I mean, you're talking about how many four-bedroom units?
He's got twenty-four bedrooms and he has twenty-five parking spaces. And with the, with the special use request, um, part of it is to require one parking space per bedroom. So he does meet it, Commissioner Beck.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, seeing none, I'd like to open for the applicant's presentation.
Okay, thank you, Jane. Good evening, Commission members. I'm Peter Petromelli at, uh, four thirty South James Garner Avenue. You know, the staff was, report was pretty detailed. A couple of things that they, uh, didn't, uh, put in there, but that I, I wanted to talk about was, um, well, one was parking. We do account for one parking space for every bedroom. Uh, the second thing is, uh, rainwater collection and rainwater control. On all developments, we've, uh, we've started, uh, collecting, uh, the rainwater on site. Slowly so that it does not flood the streets and, uh, even though this is not required on this property, we've done that, um, uh, on this one as, as, as we do on all of ours. Um, let's see, um, if anything else that's really come up. The other, the, the big thing that, that we're doing on this that, that I want to just really, uh, you know, talk about was the fact that if, if we densified this site to its, to its capabilities or potential based on base code, we would have five floors, three bed units and an apartment complex. That would include sixty beds. It would also only require twenty-four or twenty-five parking spaces. Uh, and so what we're doing in lieu of that is what, what we're calling, you know, we, we feel is, is a responsible infill, which, uh, collects our rainwater, which we know is an issue in this area. Provides one parking space per bedroom, which we know is an issue in this area. It allows us flexibility on this property in the future to become retail space on the first floor with two bedroom units on the second and third for live work and, and other types of mixed use infill when this area is capable of, um, supporting those, those other uses.
Now what determines whether this site is capable of those other uses? How are you determining? Other than the fact that you're providing more bedrooms for students?
Yes, I mean, we, we're, I, I mean, any development that we put here in this spot at this time, whether they're one, two, three, four, six bedrooms are all being taken by students. Um, and so what we've found, because last year I built fifteen three-bed units and five two-bed units and every single one of them has been taken from, by students, no matter how many calls we get from students or young professionals or, uh, or anyone else. Uh, and, and that's really what's happening right now in this area, but we also know that, that trends change. And, and I know that the properties that, um, that were developed off of Lindsay and where the market was when I was a student um, has changed to where it is now. And, and I believe that when Garner, I mean, we all see the James Garner, uh, street turned into something that's more multimodal where we have bike lanes and sidewalks and, and we see this, this, we see the downtown area um, heading south. And once we're able to do that, we're gonna have more opportunities for office retail and the live work on the street. And I think once that happens, that this trend in this area will change uh, from more of a student-driven market to a young professional, uh, driven market. And, and I, I see that trend happening in the next, oh, five to seven years. Uh, maybe I'm being optimistic, but, uh, I think that, um, with what council's doing and uh, some of the things that I see happening on Main Street and Gray Street and some of the things that are planned, um, that, that is, uh, that is a reality. And, and frankly, I just want to be prepared for it. Uh, I think this, this gives us an opportunity for that. You know, it, it addresses kind of the need now, but it also addresses, uh, you know, it gives us flexibility for the future.
Any other questions for the applicant?
So you, you've, I've talked to you a number of times, Peter. Bottom line for me is accessible dwelling units. You know, um, and you're not supplying them, no one else is supplying them and I'm getting pretty damn tired of no one supplying them, uh, when there's definitely a need around for accessible dwelling units. Um, and I think, I can't remember if as you were talking, you know, seniors look at this stuff and they don't want to live, I mean, around the students, because what the students do, if you drive that neighborhood on any given weekend, you have those fricking beer pong tables laying all over the place and the fricking furniture laying all over the place. Um, and we can't keep those kids from living there, but it sure has screwed up our neighborhoods. And I can't stand it.
Dave, you know you won't see that online if you go by there right now. You are, and, and, well, okay, so two things. One, and, and I, I understand your frustration and I, I, I feel it, but uh, on, on all of my properties, if you drive by them, uh, our kids are respectful, they, they pick up after themselves. I feel that that's a part of the management. You know that we're here. That this is the, you know, I live in Oklahoma City, but this is my backyard and if you talk to my wife and family, you'll know that I spend more hours in Norman, um, every week than I do in Oklahoma City and and, and, and you'll, and you'll know just by the quality of, of, of the properties that we have and the way the grounds look. On the other thing that you mentioned with the, with, um, accessible housing, uh, every first floor unit that I built last year, uh, is type B accessible unit. And I just submitted and got approved at the city on Monday for a building uh, that has the exact same type B units on the first floor, just a corner. And so we, we are, we, and, and we've also talked about my, my other development and just down the, you know, down on the other side of campus that is strictly focused on that. And so, um, it, you know, uh, I'm not ignoring that, that, I'm not ignoring that need. I feel very strongly about it and, and, and like you said, we've talked about it and, and and, and I am do, and I am doing it.
Well, and I, and I appreciate that. I was doing a little showboating.
Yeah, I know. I appreciate it.
I love you, Peter, you know that.
Yeah.
So, um, and I appreciate you trying. I, you know, because you're really the only one that has tried and quite frankly, you're right. I don't see that kind of crap in front of your housing. Your housing is different and has been different. It's the other stuff.
Any other questions for the applicant? I'd like to know a little bit more about this rainwater collection and flow release system, if you could describe that a little bit.
Oh, I, I will try, uh, to my ability. Uh, our sibling engineer, uh, he's, he's a good friend of mine. We've worked together for about ten years and, and he works real closely with Todd and the city staff. Frankly, the, my, um, my rudimentary, uh, knowledge and explanation of it is that we have perforated pipes that we run underground with a different sized gravel infill a, a, around it. And then around that is, um, a, uh, like a liner. And so what they can do is they can calculate the amount of rainwater that's coming off of our roof and that are going down into, uh, into the downspouts and then we're able to calculate from there uh, how broom we have in that gravel and in that, um, in that perforated pipe. And so what the, what the city staff says and what they call the first flush, it's what they're trying to collect. So when we get that one inch of downfall, um, how much of that can we collect and keep out of the street that first hour? And then as the rest of the runoff starts to dissipate into the streams, then ours releases slowly or as the rain tapers off, uh, it's filled, it releases the rest of it. And if doesn't, it just, uh, dissipates into the ground. And, you know, from, from our end, uh, on, on our size developments, it's, it's a cost, but, um, I, I just look at it as a, I mean, and it sounds really like I'm, uh, I, I'm not trying to sound preachy, but I just feel like it's a good, a good way. It's just an easy way to be a good neighbor. You know, we did it down the street on, on a couple of other projects where it wasn't required and it's not required anywhere in orange or red. But I just, I like doing it. Um, um, I just, I just do. I think it's a good thing to, to be able to say at the end of the day, look, look at what we did. And if everybody did this too, then, uh, you know, it, things would get a, you know, they, they, you know, death by a thousand paper cuts. So.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Siding, Peter. What kind of siding are you gonna be using?
It's painted cement board.
Yay.
Yeah. We're getting that cedar re, uh, refinished. It's, it did not hold, the, the original pre-finished stain that was on that did not hold up. It, it's, um, oh, it makes me cringe.
Any more questions for the applicant? Seeing none, I'd like to open to audience comments. Again, a reminder to please state your full name, your address and to keep comments to three minutes each, please. Do you have anybody there? Seeing no audience comments, I'd like to move to planning commission discussion.
Can I, I'm so sorry, Commissioner, Commissioner Byrd, may I say one thing real quick?
Sure.
I apologize. I'm so sorry. I, um, I didn't go all the way to the end. I was trying to save those two slides for the applicant, so if he needed to talk about them. But I did need to show you, uh, that we did receive a protest. It was outside of the notification area. So I apologize. It was at the end of the slides and I just didn't get there because I was waiting for the applicant to see those two slides that were up there if he wanted to show you. So I apologize.
Erica, you're on mute. Sorry. Uh, seeing no additional complaining commission discussion, I entertain a motion.
Commissioner Beck, so move.
Oh. Commissioner Raymond Daniel will do your second then.
End of vote.
Ms. Bayham?
Sorry, yes.
Ms. Zink?
Yes.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Ms. Williford?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Byrd?
Yes.
The motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you.
Moving to Ms. Draper's request that I tried to jump the gun on. Item eight, A, R twenty twenty-one one one four, Susan Draper requests amendment of the Norman twenty twenty-five land use and transportation plan from industrial- and transportation plan from industrial designation and institutional designation to office designation for property located at nine eleven North La Homa Avenue. And eight B O twenty twenty one dash forty two. Susan Draper requests rezoning from R one, single family dwelling district to O one office institutional district for thirteen thousand nine hundred thirty nine square feet of property located at nine eleven North La Homa Avenue. And the staff presentation, please.
Yes, thank you. I realize I wasn't introducing myself. I'm so sorry for anybody that wasn't. Jane Hudson with the Planning Department. And as you stated, we have an application for a land use plan amendment. Nine eleven North La Homa. This is an existing church. And it actually carries two land use designations, the industrial designation as well as the institutional designation. And then the zoning is actually R one. So it's a rather odd situation for a site. But here is the, the subject tract. As you can see, it's institutional on the north side with the industrial on the south side. The land use plan shows that this is a commercial designation on the south side of this subject tract. However, a, there is a new home there. And then we have the industrial designations to the west, which again have single family homes on them as well as industrial land. And then north of that, there are existing businesses such as insulation shops. There are some design shops and stuff like that. So it's pretty active around the north side of this subject tract. And then across acres, you do have the low density residential. If approved, this would carry the office designation for this tract. And then, as I said, the existing zoning on the site is R one and they're requesting to go to O one. There's the subject tract. As I said in the staff report, there, you know, there are residential uses to the east, to the south and to the west. But on the, on the west and the east, those are essentially the backyards of those properties. And then on the south side, that ha- house that's there actually backs up to the back of the structure there. So it's not like the parking lot is adjacent to that single family home there. Again, you can see the use in the area. You've got the residential use around to the southwest and east, and then the industrial, commercial mixed uses up to the, to the north of the site. And just to remind everybody, we have the library that was just built over on the east side adjacent to the railroad tracks. Here's the subject tract. There's the property itself. This is looking back to the north. This is to the southwest there. This is across directly west. And again, west. And then that's back to the southwest. Staff presents to Planning Commission for Consideration Resolution twenty twenty one dash one fourteen as well as ordinance twenty twenty one dash forty two for your consideration. I believe I did see the applicant on the Zoom call, so I'll go ahead and stop sharing my screen.
Any questions for staff? Okay, great. And then if the applicant is available for a presentation.
Yes. Thank you all very much. My name is Susan Draper. I am the owner broker of Draper Realty. We are residential listing and sales and a property management company. And currently we are officing on campus, which we do love being in the center of Norman and the core and the flavor. But the campus parking and the traffic is starting to get a lot for us. And the opportunity arose to come and buy this little church and we did move on that because it is still really close to core Norman. My husband Conrad and I are both Norman people. He opened a business. His first business was nineteen seventy four and my first business was nineteen eighty seven. The opportunity to buy, oh, to actually own a building that your, your, your company can locate in is just a super great opportunity for us. And we are really thankful that you guys are listening to our application today. I did want to let you know that we are a real estate company and our office hours are Monday through Thursday from nine to five. And on Friday, we have shorter hours of nine to two. And so our office is pretty slow. We have about six people that come in and out throughout the day. We are there occasionally on a Saturday and or Sunday because we do sell real estate. Typically, we don't have a lot of visitors to the offices, very little, only in the beginning of the months when people come in to pay their rent checks. And even those these days are all paid virtually online. So for us, this parking lot, this church is, is enormous because we're coming from campus. But we do know that that's why the church is moving out. They couldn't, they overfilled their parking lot and they had to park along the streets and stuff like that. So we're, we're hopeful that our, that we're unnoticedable inside the area for the residential people. They hardly probably will know we're there because we are basically there during normal working hours. And there will not be a whole lot of car traffic or foot traffic coming into the space. I think that's, that's it.
Thank you. Does commission have any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, are there any audience comments? Seeing none again, I'd like to open to planning commission discussion. Seeing no discussion. Oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, Commissioner Beck, I was just gonna comment that I think the place is, it's a good location for what you're trying to do with it.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? And if none, then I would entertain a motion.
Commissioner Beck, so move.
Commissioner Bayham, second.
End of vote.
Ms. Bayham? Yes. Ms. Zink?
Yes.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Jabonski?
Yes.
Ms. Williford?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Bird?
Yes.
The motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you all. Moving to our next item, item nine O dash twenty twenty one forty three. Accelerated Norman Maine LLC Fuzzel Brothers LLC and Golden Twins LLC request closure of the public interest in a certain strip of land, the east west alley and block one of re-plat of Fuzzel's second edition. Is there a staff presentation?
Commissioner Jane Hudson, again, I don't normally do these, so I'm just going to read this brief summary and then I'm going to hand this over to Mr. Rieger or Mr. Joyce as Mr. Danner is not here with us tonight, so I'll just give a brief summary real quick. They are requesting closure. The property is generally located between Berry Road and Gateway Drive, south of West Maine. The final plat of the re-plat of Fuzzel's second edition was recorded in October of nineteen forty nine. I believe that there was a similar request back in October of twenty twenty. It was withdrawn. And the applicant's representatives are bringing that forward tonight. I'll let the applicants take it from there.
Any questions for staff before we go to the applicant presentation? Okay, thank you. And Mr. Rieger, you can take it from there where your representative.
Thank you, Commissioner Bird. This is Gunnar Joyce with Rieger Law Group, representing the three applicants tonight. And just a little history, I want to dive into this. There was an application filed in October of last year. The three property owners couldn't reach an agreement. And so they, they got together and, and we come together at this point with all three joining in on the application. All three agreeing on, on the path forward. And so let me walk you through a little bit. We're again, we're at the corner of basically Main Street and Berry Road. This is the stripper land.
Mute yourself, please. Mute yourself.
Yes, we have a, there's a lot of background noise. If everybody who is not actually at the applicant's presentation speaking could please mute.
All right. That sound better? Perfect. All right. I'll, I'll keep moving here. This is basically a ten foot strip of land and really the, the character of this strip is, is in question. The plat back in nineteen forty eight didn't accurately describe this as an alleyway. So there's a debate on whether it was properly dedicated as an alleyway or if it's private property. Johnny's, when they developed, came in and put this entryway into their site trying to gain another access point. The property owner right here disputed that it was actually an alley. And then basically put a blockade to not allow access. And then Johnny's built over the other half of the alleyway with the kind of the trash enclosures you see here in the parking lot. And so really the request tonight is basically to clear this up and to clear up a title issue. Because the title commitments are showing this as an alleyway on the plat, even though really we've, we've kind of gotten two answers from, from city staff over many, many years now that it was an alley or that's private property. And so the wording in this application is really just to clear up any public interest in this strip of the land, be it an alley, be it not, and move forward through the district court action to vacate any, any rights in this strip. There is an overhead electrical line and also sewer line here. We will provide easements for those utilities to remain in their existing locations through the district court process when we get to that point. Here's a street view so you can kind of see what it looks like on the ground. This is from Berry Road looking west and you can see that start of that access point that Johnny's put in. It dead ends right there from the trap, the trash enclosure, which you can see from the other side from Gatewood Drive. So you can see no connection there for, for an alleyway. And it really has not been treated like an alley on this side. And so that's really the summary here. It's kind of a, an interesting one. But now, moving forward, all three of budding property owners agree on basically the end result they want to reach. The city agrees with us that, that they have no issues with the proposal as long as we provide those easements for the existing utilities, which we will do. And that is basically it. So I'm happy to take any, any questions you all may have.
Are there any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, I'm open to audience comments. Seeing none, Planning Commission discussion. Bird, I'm just going to add that my husband previously rented the space just to the south of the alley closure in question. And I asked him what his thoughts being the neighbor to that. And he did not see any issue with that closure. So I asked somebody who used that property directly adjacent and what his opinion was. And he was there for several years. So I would be in favor of that closure. Not seeing any additional discussion. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. McDaniel moves to approve.
Second.
End of vote.
Ms. Bayham? Yes. Ms. Zink?
Yes.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Jabonski?
Yes.
Ms. Williford?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Bird?
Yes.
The motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you.
Moving to our next items, ten A, ten A R twenty twenty one, 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 five. Shaz Investments LLC requests amendment of the Norman twenty twenty five land use and transportation plan from future urban service area to current urban service area for approximately forty one point four six acres of property, generally located half mile south of Cedar Lane Road on the east side of Jenkins Avenue and extending southeast to twelfth Avenue Southeast. And item ten B O twenty twenty one forty four. Shaz Investments LLC requests rezoning from A one general agricultural district and A two rural agricultural district to R one, single family dwelling district for approximately forty one point four six acres of property, generally located a half mile south of Cedar Lane Road on the east side of Jenkins Avenue and extending southeast to twelfth Avenue Southeast. And also a third item, ten C P P twenty twenty one eleven, consideration of a preliminary plat submitted by Shaz Investments LLC, Crafton, Tolan Associates for Eagle Cliff West Edition for approximately forty one point four six acres of property, generally located a half mile south of Cedar Lane Road on the east side of Jenkins Avenue and twelfth Avenue Southeast. And could we please have the staff presentation?
Yes. Again, Jane Hudson, Norman Planning Department. As you said, there's three applications for this proposed development. The applicant is proposing to bring these two subject tracks into the current urban service area. They're currently designated as the future urban service area. Is approximately fifty one acres with a hundred and forty seven single family homes. It's already designated as a low density residential. And for the rezoning, we're going to be rezoning from A one and A two to the R one designation. You've Eagle Cliff, the existing Eagle Cliff subdivision to the north. So this is just the continuation of the Eagle subdivision. As you can see, the area to the south goes basically to the city limits down there. There is some floodplain area down there. However, none of the development itself is within the floodplain. And in the zoning staff report, I would like to make a correction under impacts. Staff had stated the preliminary plat requires detention facilities to mitigate any runoff or erosion issues. However, if you will reference the staff report from Public Works Engineering, it stated that the, there will be, staff recommends a fee in lieu of detention with any final plat, water will be conveyed to the south within the undeveloped property. Wanted to clarify that for you as well. That was wrong in the zoning staff report. So this is an area of the, this property that will be developed. This is at the end of twelfth street. So you're looking at the future area. It's off to the, to the west as well. That will be developed in the future. Again, you can see on this preliminary plat, the dash line there, that is the area of the floodplain and there's no development within that. Here on this one as well. Again, the same thing here. City staff received protest which amounted to forty point four percent for these areas shown in pink. Staff does present to Planning Commission Resolution R dash twenty And staff does present to Planning Commission Resolution R-2021-115 O 2021-44, as well as this preliminary plat, PP-2021-11 for your consideration. We do have city staff here that can answer any questions you may have. And the applicant's representative is on the call or on Zoom as well.
Thank you. We'll start with questions for staff.
This is Commissioner Jablonsky. Can you tell me about this floodplain? What kind of floodplain is it? And is the classification realistic? One of the protests points out that because of inappropriate stormwater management, that the area has been holding a lot more water than it historically did. And that, that concerns me.
Yes, Commissioner, this is Todd McClellan. I'm the Development Engineer for the City of Norman. Floodplain you're referring to, that's the Canadian River Bishop Creek Floodplain. And it's currently zoned AE, which means that there's base flood elevation data for that area. There was a detailed study by FEMA. The last time the map was updated was 2008. There may be additional water ponding up and building up down there. And that's probably due to the upstream development. As far as I know, there are no plans to update the maps. Although we've been requesting that the Bishop Creek Floodplain map be updated. Right now, because of funding, that hasn't been done.
Thank you.
Jane had mentioned that the staff had recommended the fee in lieu of the detention ponds. Can I have some more explanation as to why that recommendation happened on this particular project?
Yes, sure, Commissioner. I'd be happy to explain it. The way that works is when we have development near the rivers, we like to fee in lieu of detention because not providing detention during a storm allows the to get out of the developed area quicker than if we did do detention. And it gets out there quick. We want to get out there quicker before the peak flow from Bishop Creek comes down the stream. Therefore, by getting it out there, we have less flooding when we get it out there ahead of time. And I believe the area of Bishop Creek, the total drainage area is very large. It's approximately 6,700 acres. During a large event, we have quite a peak flow coming down the creek. By doing fee in lieu of detention, we get the water from this development out into the toward, headed toward the river and the creek faster than if we did when, if we did do detention. So it reduces the flooding potential by not combining with the peak flow coming down Bishop Creek.
Now, this is Commissioner Beck. I guess that that would be my big question here. You know, obviously, we're at the end of Norman. You know, this is the end of the City of Norman boundary here. And the river runs through here in Bishop Creek, you know. And there's been lots of concerns of Bishop Creek when you get in up to like Lindsay and north of Lindsay. And actually down into Sherwood Forest and those areas because of all the development that's gone on. And the city deals with that on a continual basis. But I guess the question I have is where do I see the concern from some comment from some protest was in terms of flooding, but I'm not sure what we're talking, where the concern for flooding would be in these residential neighborhoods? Because again, this is at the end of Norman. This is the end of development for this part of the river and creek. So what's the concern?
Well, you have to ask the protesters, but I believe the main concern is that by developing, they're getting more volume of water. And
Who's they? And where are they? I don't see how that's a problem, looking at this site development plan.
Well, yeah, they're here. They're in the audience. And I think they're planning on speaking after the presentations.
Commissioner Williford, I have a question. Have you, when you talk about getting rid of the detention ponds in lieu of a fee, have you looked at where that stormwater goes? Because it doesn't go directly to the river. It travels through someone else's property. So how, how do you, how does the city determine what is an acceptable method of where that water goes and potentially floods when it's not going directly to the river?
Well, the applicant, they have to do a drainage report as part of the preliminary plat supplemental. So we review the data, how much water's coming down and what the flow paths are. You are correct. It has to cross some property to the south before it gets to the creek and the river. So I mean, there are concerns by the property owners that there will be additional erosion because of the water. But we feel by doing fee in lieu of detention that it will reduce the risk of flooding because this water will be out towards the creek and the river before the peak flows of Bishop Creek get down this far.
And forgive me for not knowing this answer. I probably should. So I apologize. But where do the fees go and how are they used?
Well, the fees are collected by the city and they're used on future projects, future stormwater projects.
So they're not used in any way to help the properties that are damaged by this water draining into their properties? Or other detention ponds for this water that is flooding downward?
Well, that is true. They're usually not used on private property. They're used on stormwater infrastructure projects.
So developers, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but so developers pay a fee to not put in drainage detention ponds? And then the money is used elsewhere? So developers cannot build these ponds. Water just runs downward off their property to somewhere else. And then the city uses it for further development and/or stormwater usage?
Yes, that's, that's the idea, yes.
That doesn't make sense to me.
Well, again, it has to do with trying to reduce the flooding potential. Now, we're not opposed to the applicant. If they want to do detention, you know, we're not opposed to it. We're just saying if they do it, they're probably increasing the risk of flooding potential for the people along Bishop Creek.
Does it cost, sorry, Erica, does it cost the developer less money to pay the fee or to build the detention pond?
That would, you would have to ask the applicant and the developer that question. Current fee is they pay 14 cents per square foot of additional impervious area they are adding.
Thank you.
Bird here. And I, I'm sorry, I don't know if I heard Commissioner Beck's question getting answered as far as that, as to who the flooding concern was. I apologize if that was answered, but when you're talking about the increased risk of flooding, could you just clarify who, is it that you said the people along Bishop's Creek that would have increased flooding? Or who would be affected by this increased flooding?
Well, it would be people upstream along Bishop Creek that could be affected.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Jablonsky. I have a question, not about the flooding or the stormwater management, but about parks. Did I miss that? We were supposed to get an update from the city about parks, and I didn't see that.
Jane will answer that question.
Gosh, I'm so sorry. So many moving parts. Yeah, that was a fee in lieu of for parks.
And correct me if I'm wrong, there was also a fee in lieu of parks the last time that they developed in that area. Is that right?
I do not know that. I didn't, I did not check that. I just got the vote for the, this item. It went to park. I don't, I'm hearing that there was no parkland required. So they did fee in lieu of last time, yes.
Thank you. I'm still Commissioner Jablonsky. Can you tell me where the closest parks are and what the access is like in terms of walking access to those parks or green space also?
There's the large park that's up north in Eagle Cliff. I couldn't tell you the exact location. It's closer to Cedar Lane. To my knowledge, there is, is not another park within the Eagle Cliff subdivision, but the one that is up there, it is, it is a very large park. It's, it's south of the, of course, the commercial, then you have the duplexes, then you have the apartment complex. So it's, it's a good, I don't know, quarter of a mile back in from Cedar Lane. I'm trying to look at a map we have in here in this room.
Yeah, I'm just trying to eyeball it myself right now. And it looks, looks like it's maybe a half mile walk if I had to guess. Houses in that new development, but someone can correct me.
Is the, sorry, Commissioner Williford, is the fee in lieu of for parks the same as the fee in lieu of for detention pond?
The fee in lieu will go to the area parks. There's a determination, excuse me, from Parks Board where they would utilize that funding, is my understanding. So I mean, part of it could go to the Eagle Cliff Park. It depends, I guess, if it was a neighborhood park fee or if it was a community park fee, whatever their designation was. I believe they, they can designate how that goes. I'm sorry, I don't have anybody from Parks Board from No, I just, I don't want to tell you the wrong thing, but I believe that's, that's how they designate that funding.
Sure. Do you, Jane, do you happen to know if it's also 14 cents? Or do you know the price that they pay?
I do not. I'm sorry, Commissioner. I can find out. I can send you guys an email and let you know.
No, no, I'm just curious.
This is Commissioner Zink. I wanted to respond to Commissioner Jablonsky's comment. I used to live in the neighborhood and the park is probably closer to a mile away.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions of staff? Seeing none, I entertain the applicant's presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Sean Rieger representing the applicant in this case. And I'm going to try to answer all those questions. I think I can, if I can go to the screen here. So first, let me, I'm going to dive into some of these questions first, and then I'll take you through the presentation. Parkland, there are, you see the PO right there and R1 right here, the main park. The subject tract down here, the change showed you. The subject tract first, I want to say, is an outline of the entire preliminary plat. And we've talked about this before a little bit, but preliminary plats are a large area sometimes because you have to plat the whole common ownership. That's not the area that the homes are going to go into. The homes are in a much smaller area. And I'll show you that in just a moment, but they basically are pocketed up in here and over here. So the main park for Eagle Cliff Edition is right up here. And so to answer the commissioner's questions about access, you would likely come down the sidewalks. All of these areas must have sidewalks. So you would come down the sidewalks, down into this area over here, and then down over to here. So as to, as far as parkland dedication, this is all pretty structured in the preliminary plating guidelines. So it's a function of preliminary plating. And the way it works on developments is the developer has to do one of three things. They have to either pay fee in lieu of for a park, or they have to provide private parkland dedication, or they have to provide a public park. If they do a public park, then that is factored by population. It's a structured calculation in the ordinance of the City of Norman. They determine the population planned for the plat being done. So you would take the population of these homes, probably times 2.3 persons per household, which is the US Census figure. And you would determine the population. Then there is a standard per square foot of person per park. And so this is all pre-calculated. We don't determine any of this. It's all in ordinance. And so then the park gets determined, the public park size gets determined by that. What happens functionally is when you're doing small sections, small additions like this, that calculation ends up being a pretty small park. And so what you oftentimes is to find is the Board of Park Commissioners or the staff of Parks Board. And congratulations to Judge Foster for his retirement this past week. Usually, they desire to basically have, have a fee in lieu of, because they don't want a tiny park. Because tiny parks become a maintenance problem for them to go out and mow and maintain every little bitty park all over the city. So a lot of times, in situations like this where there's a main park for the neighborhood, oftentimes, they will actually collect monies for each addition, each section that comes in, and then use those monies to, to basically augment or enhance the existing park. As to value, somebody asked the question, what is the price of the fee in lieu of? The Parks Department determines that price based on fair market value of typically floodplain land because most parks are a lot of times in floodplain or open areas. And that's the price used per square foot at an equivalent rate of the public parkland. Hope that makes sense. That's a long explanation, but that's how parkland works in plating. It's a function of plating, not of zoning, not of land use. So it's very rudimentary and calculated in the, in the plating ordinances. So these, which would be relatively small additions as compared to the whole, are planned for a fee in lieu of. And likely, a lot of times, they use those fees to enhance the neighborhood park. So that's, that's there. So let me continue on. I'm going to address all the stormwater questions too, as we get deeper into this presentation. So this is the area Cedar Lane Road down here, 12th Avenue Southeast Cobblestone. If you're familiar with Cobblestone, is right over here. And Eagle Cliff is the addition that has been a continuation of an addition over many years now, really a very long time. Over decades, really, as it's just continued to grow south. The general orientation as the general area is looking, this is Highway 9 across the top. This is 12th Avenue coming down here. This is Cedar Lane right here. This is Jenkins over here and the wastewater treatment plant right here, the animal shelter, those things. There's not a connection right now with Cedar. Someday, that could happen. But the land we're looking at, again, preliminary plat layout is this whole area down here. The actual homes layout is quite a lot smaller, and I'll show you that as we get into it. This is all the Eagle Cliff Edition right here, a continuation as the market has absorbed this addition, homes are added to it. This is actually, again, of the preliminary plat we're talking about, not the particular layout of the homes. This big swath you see going through there is a power transmission line that's kept clear. And then the lift station, this is an important little element right there, but that is the lift station that is in place right now to carry the sanitary sewer service for this neighborhood on over to the wastewater treatment plant, which is over here. So tonight, on your agenda, is really mostly a preliminary plat. The first two items on your agenda are what we call an amendment of the future urban service area to the current urban service area on 2025. You don't see a lot of these very often because they just are the peripheral developments. This is one we haven't had in a while, but this is basically saying we now have utilities to serve it, and so it gets transferred in. The rezoning you're seeing is to rezone to R1. And then the preliminary plat is the mechanics of creating lots in the block and the development. So I'm going to take you through each one of those one by one. So the urban service area, amendment 2025. Again, we don't see a lot of these, but what this is, and it's probably hard to see on screen right there, but that is striped. This light yellow area right there is striped. And if I was to show you the actual printed map of 2025, it has areas that are striped. And they're striped in a particular color for a reason. The stripe means that that is future service area, meaning services of water and sewer. And the color means, so the stripe is future. The color of the stripe is what 2025, as adopted policy said, we want it to become when services become available to it. So what this is doing is doing exactly that. So we now have services. We have water and sewer to these locations. And so the developer has requested to now put them into current urban service area, which is what we're asking right there. So the proposed rezoning to R1 and the current service area, we are simply asking you to take off the stripes. In effect, is what we're doing. Take off the stripe. In effect is what we're doing, take off the stripes and make it yellow, just like the rest of the area is yellow. So that's what the twenty twenty five plan change is doing. And in order to do that, to do that, excuse me, you have to do two things. You have to show that we have public facilities, water and sewer, that they're in place and can serve the development or will be at the time of development. I showed you that lift station right down here, that's what will serve the sanitary sewer. And water is all right at the periphery as well. So we've satisfied that condition. And the second condition is actually pretty similar, it just says the development will not utilize, uh, sewer capacities. Basically, it won't exceed sewer capacities is what this basically says. And the city staff has written in their staff reports that this is well within the capacities of the sewer plant. And so with those two criteria satisfied, uh, we can shift that into current urban service areas now. And here is the staff report that says, uh, since the adoption in twenty twenty five, the necessary public facilities have been established. This is the staff report that says, uh, that we have the capacity to be extended, expanded to serve this development. Water and sewer is available, these are the staff orders, not ours. Uh, and it goes on to say this will not result in adverse land use or traffic impacts. Which, again, you wouldn't think there'd be any way to do that because we are transitioning exactly into the use that the policymakers in twenty twenty five asked us to transfer into. So we're not changing, for instance, that to red or orange or, or deep yellow or anything like that. We're just turning it right into exactly what policymakers asked us to turn it into. And I thought I'd share with this, I don't think I've ever, uh, shown you guys this before, but twenty twenty five is, is a big book. There's a big book with twenty twenty five that accompanies the map. And it actually addresses future urban service areas and it's kind of applicable to the one we're doing tonight. It actually talks about, uh, infrastructure requirements, not all portions of it will be able to, uh, develop urban densities. And it gives us an instruction and says, the need to prevent development at less than urban densities from occurring in those areas and interim. And in order to ensure that development at less than urban densities does not occur, city council will continue the policy that does not allow for these areas to be rezoned to residential estate. And what that's telling you is that residential estate is the two acre lots. Residential state is the, is the two acre lots. So what that paragraph is saying is, they don't want you to change this to agricultural or residential estates. They want you to take it into urban densities, which is what the rest of the neighborhood is. So the policy is to take off the stripes, turn it into yellow, make it R one, single family. And that's what we're proposing tonight. And staff notes that the, the last approved plat, which is basically exactly what we're asking for tonight in terms of policy, was approved just, uh, two years ago in two thousand nineteen. So the land use change is just taking off the stripes, make it current, make it the same use that the policy asked for. The rezoning, excuse me, my voice is going here, is to change A one and A one and A two to R one. Again, just like twenty twenty five asked us to do, this yellow over here is R one. So twenty twenty five is saying we want you to go to R one and that is exactly what you're, what we're asking you to do tonight. So there's a rezoning request, fits exactly within the twenty twenty five plan to move these to R one. And what is R one? I think, uh, usually we're, we're sitting in front of you with puds, you're familiar with puds. And we do puds because we want to change a setback or we want to change a height or we want to change a coverage area. This developer, uh, uh, pretty unique anymore really, is choosing to not change anything. They just want straight R one and R one is right out of the zoning code, it's right here. And you see all these yellow areas all over the city, you can see basically the older areas, this is OU right here, I thirty five. That whole area is yellow, that's the same thing we're zoning into tonight is R one. So nothing different, no pud, no changes. We just simply want to do what twenty twenty five has suggested we do and take it straight into R one. So the rezoning, uh, is very simple really in that we're seeking straight R one, which means we carry in with it the exact policies of the City of Norman as to density, as to purview coverage, as to drainage, as to landscaping, all of that. We're not modifying any of it, we're just saying, take us straight into R one. Staff report, uh, finds that there will be no negative impacts to this surrounding area. And it's close proximity to the access of major arterials and everything else. So it really is an extension of the existing developments, totally in keeping with twenty twenty five and totally using the existing R one ordinance. So the big part of this request really is preliminary plat. In that the uses are basically in line with the policy of the city, twenty twenty five and zoning. And so the plat, which also is more of a ministerial function typically, uh, is just creating the actual lots and streets and blocks. So, uh, when we plat, we have to follow what's called the engineering design guidelines of the city. In fact, those are being updated right now. In fact, we all went to a meeting, uh, last week that was to update the engineering design guidelines. And that will be ongoing now for the next year or two. But when we plat, we have to create all of these lots and streets and sidewalks and fire hydrants and everything in keeping with what is a large book of the engineering design guidelines. Uh, and just like the zoning, uh, this applicant has chosen to basically fit, uh, all within those criteria. There's one variance, I'll show you that in just a second, uh, but otherwise it is basically the exact, uh, policies of the city in terms of how we plat. Very importantly, you see this blue line, that is the edge of the floodplain. And you will see, we don't even have a backyard in the floodplain. Sometimes you will see developers actually extend the backyard into the floodplain, but keep a buildable area outside of the floodplain. This developer has chosen to not even put so much as a fence back in the floodplain, they're not touching it. So the floodplain is untouched, this is all R one, single family development per the city policies and per twenty twenty five. That's the west side of it and then the east side of it is down here. Same thing, here's the floodplain in blue, right here. And again, not even a fence is going to touch that floodplain, it'll go right up to it, but we're not putting anything out in the floodplain at all. These will all meet the City of Norman's engineering design criteria. The only change that we've asked for is this cul-de-sac right here. Uh, we asked for our variance to extend it to eight hundred feet, there's only a few homes out on the end of it. Uh, the city staff, I think, is supportive of that, I believe the staff report says they are. And, uh, that's a couple hundred feet longer than what the engineering sign guidelines would ask for, that's it. So the one variance has nothing to do with stormwater or, uh, any of those issues. So stormwater, let's talk about it, uh, several questions about it and I thought I would try to explain to you a little bit more about it. I think Commissioner Beck asked who would be flooded and who, where does the water go? Well, here it is, so, uh, this is the drainage area, this is Eagle Cliff right here. And actually I should just go ahead and get, uh, an annotator out there. So, so this is Eagle Cliff right here, Bishop Creek goes up here. And as I think, uh, the staff member said, Bishop Creek is a large area of Norman. Bishop Creek goes way up into North Norman and drains a significant area. Very importantly, Bishop Creek drains much of the University of Oklahoma, which we love OU, great partner. But I will tell you, OU doesn't follow the stormwater regulations of the City of Norman. And you won't find many detention basins on the University of Oklahoma. So as the South Research Area Campus and the, uh, National Weather Center, Lloyd Noble, uh, all of these areas have been created with parking lots. Those areas are all draining down Bishop Creek, down into here. And what you see in those protest letters and the comments as to excessive water, they're talking about this area down here. Well, what is that area? That area is the floodway. And I think, uh, Commissioner Beck was actually talking earlier on a different application about floodway and floodplain. And let me explain the difference, uh, and Kendall Dillon, by the way, with Craft and Toll is with us tonight to give you much better knowledge than me. But, uh, floodway, this is how FEMA said, this is what FEMA says a floodway is. It is a irregular story, floodway means the actual channel of a river or other water course. This is the river channel. And a lot of us think the channel is just this little skinny area down here, not according to FEMA. FEMA says everything striped red is the actual floodway, which is the actual channel. There is significant water in a floodway, in a channel, that's where it goes. So where, who gets flooded, Commissioner Beck asked that earlier. Well, the area the water goes to is the floodway. The floodway is what gets all of this water. Here's, here's Eagle Cliff Edition, right up here, this is the addition. Our project tonight that you're looking at is roughly in this yellow area. The water is going that way. And so the water is not going back into the neighborhood at all, the water is going down into the floodway. Where it is supposed to go, so that's where the water is supposed to go, we are right at the edge of the floodway. So the blue is the floodplain. And floodplain is basically the expansion area of a floodway. And, and I'm very rudimentary in my descriptions here, but the floodplain, the blue area is where when the floodway, the actual river channel, when it exceeds its borders, it is supposed to expand into the blue area, which is the floodplain. We are outside the blue area, we're right on the edge of it, but we're outside of it and the water will cascade down into the floodway. So that's where it's supposed to go. So you got protest letters, for instance, one, from one family that said there's excessive water out here. I just want to again reiterate, the excessive water they're talking about is in the floodway. It's in the river channel, so, uh, that's what they're discussing. So let's talk about, uh, I, I was debating to show you this because it, this is just me, an old engineer one time, tried to explain to me, what is fee in lieu of and why do we do it? So I'm going to give it a shot, we've never shown this before, but I've always wanted to show you this. So fee in lieu of, have you heard, uh, Mr. McClellan? Tell you that they want the water at the end of the basin to get out and get out quick. And the reason is because if you detain this water, all of this water up here is trying to get out. It's trying to get to the floodway in significant rain event. If you hold back this water, then you're actually holding back all of this water with it. You want the water next to the floodway, get out quickly. Because it frees up volume and space for all of that water behind it to get out. And I had an old engineer one time explain to me like this, so there's Owen Stadium, uh, Oklahoma. Let's say we've all been to a ballgame, I think a lot of us have. Let's say you're sitting right up here, right, at the end up here. Well, you got to get to that exit right there. Well, before you get to that exit, the people in the little yellow circle, they got to get out. If you tell the people in the little, little yellow circle to just stand there and wait to detain themselves, you are keeping all of these people from getting out. It's no different than water. If you tell the water at the edge of the floodplain to stay there in detention ponds, then all the water behind it can't get out. And what happens if it can't get out and it continues to rain? You're flooding all the people behind these areas that are right at the edge of floodway and want to get out. So I've always had engineers describe it to me like that, just like a stadium, you want the people next to the exit, just like the water next to the floodplain. You want it to get out and get out quick because that frees up room for everybody else to travel the same quarter that they have to travel. So that's fee in lieu of, you know, as a concept. So finally, again, really the zoning, twenty twenty five meet the adopted policies of twenty twenty five. We're doing exactly what it's asked, R one is exactly what it asked us to zone into. And as to preliminary plat, we're doing exactly what it asked as well. And I would note, actually, it was staff that again, per fee in lieu of is asking us to do fee in lieu of so that we can follow that concept of getting the water out of there quickly. Uh, no residential lots in the floodplain, traffic exceeds the capacities and staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat as well. So Kendall Dillon, Craft and Toll is with us, uh, I'm happy to answer any questions you have and with that, I thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Did, did you hear me? Were there any questions for the applicant?
Not here.
I know we have, uh, some audience comments today. Uh, I do want to just remind everybody who is going to speak to please make sure to state your name and address and stay within the three minute allotted time per person. With, uh, there was a request for the HOA because the president of the HOA represents a large group of people. We, uh, will allow a ten minute presentation from that HOA. And they had indicated in the chat that they also have PowerPoint slides they would like to share, which I will let the city address for that aspect. Um, but I would open to those audience comments and, uh, Mr. Rosendahl.
All right, yeah, thank you, let me just set this up first. Okay, thank you, the screen is sharing. Okay, yes, I'm Derek Rosendahl, um, so I do live at nine oh eight Cipruder Street. Um, and I'm president of the Board of Directors for Eagle Cliff South. And so we can jump there, um, so I will be, there we go. Yeah, so I guess this will be the ten minute presentation, so maybe you can warn me when there's maybe a minute left, I don't, probably won't take the whole time. So we are, um, there's all these numbered sections, um, to the, just to the north. So we're Eagle Cliff South and then north of us is Eagle Cliff, which is older, and these are the two proposed developments. In the preliminary plats, um, we, we first had some questions. The initial one said that the Property Owners Association was responsible for maintenance. And then it also said that Eagle Cliff was responsible, um, their property owners and there is no Eagle Cliff, um, Property Owners Association and then we are the only ones nearby, which is Eagle Cliff South. Um, the new plat that's currently sitting at is that it just says Property Owners Association. Um, and so we actually, we as the Eagle Cliff South refuse to be named responsible um, due to a large number of issues that have occurred in the past, um, with what has been unfinished um, and unmanageable from the same developers that we'll talk about in a second. And so here's the floodplain that we've been talking about for a while now, um, here's the official plat. Um, that was done by FEMA, um, and it's, it was done in twenty thirteen. And so since then, there have been a large number of changes and there were a large number of observational changes in the water flow and the waters, water around here. I'm just to look here, this is the area, just general area back in twenty thirteen when the, when FEMA constructed those floodplain maps and you can see there's no, um, development. And then here's, uh, this last year where, um, we developed quite a bit of more. And so the water doesn't have as much space to, uh, absorb and it's been, it's increasing the runoff. And so that's actually here, this is that new development. And here's the FEMA map, um, which we've seen. And so you can see that all of this area here used to be open land that was absorbing water when these lines were designated. And so all of this was, you know, the water wasn't running off completely. And so now all of this is developed, um, and some more water is running off, um, quickly. Um, and so this is the brand new development that is being proposed. Um, and so I would just make a comment, if, if, um, Mr. Rieger's comment is that the floodway is the river, um, then that's saying that the homes are one lot away from the river. Um, to me, doesn't seem like a very wise decision. Um, and so this is the, this next one percent hazard, which is the one hundred year floodplain, which you have to make, you are supposed to stay with. Stay out, outside of, um, and then this is the five hundred year floodplain. Um, so they do butt up right, right up against it. And if these lines, if these, you know, previous FEMA lines were correct, this would completely be fine and okay. Um, but in the last five to ten years, since this was designated, um, there's been a large amount of evidence of an increase in amount of water. Um, definitely down here, where the farmer's land is at, which we'll hear about, but all of this land that is now one percent. I used to go back there when a previous farmer owned it, um, and it was completely dry. And then it, um, has transitioned to a marshland. And there's currently two to three feet of standing water and it can be there for months at a time, right here in the once in a hundred years, so we're having a once in a hundred year flood every day, every second for a month minimum straight. And all of this is now becoming marshland and when in the past it was, um, dry. And so the farmer, yes, there's giant issues with flooding down here, but up into this region, we've actually seen a large increase of flooding. And I actually live nearby, so I, I see it all the time. So FEMA assessment needs to be done, that's new and updated, that isn't assumed to be twenty thirteen. Um, and so the next, the big issue for us as an association, um, is large erosion and drainage issues with the previous developments that have occurred with the same developers. And so as you can see, um, there's, it's hard to see this. And so as you can see, there's it's hard to see this here, but there's there's really, really steep terrain. Like this is this always been steep terrain and we're the all of the housing additions have come up and but up right against it now. They're going to be developing inside of this very steep, especially right in this area. There's very steep terrain. And even this home right here, there's a 30 foot drop between the backyard and the front yard. And there's a 15 foot drop from the right side to the left side. And so as you can see, there's 30 foot drops all over the place. And so very, very steep terrain, very long yards. And I just noticed in the new preliminary plot is that there's a 50 foot tree preservation buffer. Which would be nice, except they've already torn out all the trees there. So there are no trees in the tree buffer that would have potentially helped to decrease erosion. And so maybe more trees can be planted there, but there's enormous drop off right at that location. And so this is actually where we as a homeowner association have found massive issues in erosion that is unmanageable that were either never finished. Or they were tempted to be put in and they did not work and failed. And it was talked about, I first make a comment that there were many things said in the last presentation about the staff report. Everything I'm presenting was submitted and the staff report came out prior to all this information being submitted and it was submitted on time. The farmers to the south, all of their information was submitted. That was not all not in the staff report either. So none of this information is representative in the staff report. And so this section down here that was commented about that was approved two years ago. We came to that. We were here two years ago and we said, hey, there's these massive drainage issues. And we said, please don't build here. Very steep. It's not going to work. And we were promised that, well, there's that's fine. We know that, but we're going to put in retaining walls to stop the erosion and it'll be fine. Two years later, the cement slabs are now being poured. The homes are about to go up. No retaining walls were installed. And so what happened? So we'll take a little tour of what happened. This is what happened. Massive, massive drainage issues. Let's go around the corner. All right. So this is somebody's home right here is the sticks, the back of their home. It's actually drainage lines coming right into it with large drop offs. There's me standing in it. Huge, huge drop offs with the homes and there's already drainage issues and they're putting in homes right now. We'll keep going down the line. Bottom of this large landscape that was a lot of dirt was put in there, huge drainage issues, which is just flying right out. All right, keep going around. This one's a little better. They're trying to manage it a little bit, but we're already having cutouts in the land. Go a little farther. There's human size cutouts right where homes are going to be put. We'll keep going around. Here's another one. This is the human sized ditch going right into a backyard. More drainage issues. So this is where the retaining wall was supposed to be. Backyards. All right. So all that was what was just done. And everything I'm going to show now is what we have always known about that is that is just terrible and not working and was left. Here's another location, then home shop. Obviously gigantic drainage. This one was actually left, it would look like this when they were building. And it's only gotten worse. You can kind of see here, there's more of this falling off where I'm standing. It's the it's continuing to erode and erode and there were zero measures put in. Keep going around the corner. This is actually super extremely dangerous and we want this fixed immediately. If I take one more step out, I drop 30 feet. And that's if I turn around, this is actually going to another home. So this huge drainage ditch is going to a home 30 foot drop off. Here they try to put in a drainage easement. There's no protection. Kids can walk up to it, roll off, drop 30 feet. Keep going around the corner. There's fences and you can, there's a hidden drop off this giant 30 foot drop. Actually, you can't see it, but kids can run to it. Keep going. Listen, looking back the other direction, you can fall into the giant hole. Let's keep going. You can't see it, but there's another hole right there. Keep going. Here's a drainage that goes to nowhere. Another one, this is another steep drop off with zero protection. People can go to it. And here's erosion that was started when they were building. It's still there and it's getting worse. And this is a large area that we are supposed to maintain and it's steep drop offs with a giant drop offs and creeks in between. And you can maybe wiggle your way in. Kids can get in there, but we're supposed to manage it as an HOA and it's completely unmanageable. And if we go around the corner, they're currently building right now.
Just letting you know, have about a minute left.
Okay, thank you. That's fine. There's more stuff that's being built right now. There this one's actually being worked on and there's drainage ditches coming out of the backyard, which falls into the creek. Keep going. It's falling out of the creek, out of the backyard. More falling out. This is a large area that was not built up so that it could stop the water. There's me and the one that's going right into a home. Another one going into home. Here's the end of a street to nowhere that with this new proposal will not be extended. There's huge holes. It's become trash. Here's a large area that has no cement anywhere. It's just all can you rode by itself. And here's another land that's going to be developed. And this one has been developed right now and it's another land. So obviously huge issues, they're going to be developing in the in the same terrain. And actually this terrain is much steeper that they're going to be working in. We warned about this. It wasn't done properly.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Appreciate it. Just wanted to let everyone know. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
I might need some assistance from Renee. I understood there also may be an attorney representing some property owners to the south. And if I could get clarification, if that attorney is representing a single property owner or multiple property owners.
He's on his way into the other room as right now. So you can get that from him.
Great. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name's David Burgett. I'm a resident of Norman and my address is 930 West Lindsey. I'll try and be brief, though I am speaking on behalf of my clients. So it may be a little bit longer than three minutes. But I represent.
Would you mind just clarifying? Do you have a single person you're representing or do you have multiple clients that you're presenting on behalf of?
I am representing multiple clients. I'm probably going to be speaking on behalf of one of them. I think a couple of them like to share with you all as well. So.
Thank you.
But I represent various members of the Potts family who own the properties to the south and west of the proposed development. Unfortunately, over the course of Eagle Cliff's development, the Potts land has experienced an increase in stormwater, drainage and flooding due to the current applicant's previous upstream development. Its failure in refusal to ensure detention of the surface waters displaced by such development. And it's improper payment of a fee in lieu of detention for previous developments. The developer's failure to address these issues has resulted in significant increase in flooding and saturation of the Potts' property. Resulting in damage not only to the property's overall value. But the Potts' economic operations as well. The pictures attached to the protest filed earlier this week attest to the increased amount of water debris and trash that has made its way to the Potts' property. Including objects as large as a family Christmas tree and even a city of Norman poly cart trash can. Mr. Potts, my client will step in here shortly to go into further detail regarding the particulars. Until yesterday, we thought we were protesting and arguing over the adequacy of the three detention ponds that were disclosed on the previous preliminary plat that we were provided. The latest copy of the preliminary plat, though, removed all three detention ponds. And instead inserted water pipes and straight at our client's property. Additionally, contrary to the staff report concerning the property's rezoning. The staff report related to the preliminary plat now states that Eagle Cliff West is eligible to pay a fee in lieu of detention. Similar to the additions in both 2012 and 2019, which I believe Mr. Rosendahl referenced, the developer's failure to address the retention of surface water displaced by its development and instead request a fee in lieu of detention is not only a violation of Oklahoma law, but the city of Norman's own design criteria, which were adopted by ordinance governing the allowance of a fee in lieu of detention. According to Oklahoma law. Mr. Rieger pointed it out that it sounds like the developer is doing everything in his power to move all of the surface water off of their development onto our client's property. The developer can only divert its surface water, though, in the event the developer can do so without an injury to the Potts' land. No one is permitted to sacrifice his neighbor's property in order to protect his own. And anyone who diverts the natural flow of surface waters from his own land to that of the adjoining owner is answerable in damages. Furthermore, the city of Norman's design criteria govern the allowance of a fee in lieu of detention. According to section 50 or 5011.1 E of the design criteria. A fee in lieu of detention may only be allowed if the development is located in the upper portion of the drainage basin. The size of the development is small. And the developer's engineer states in writing that there will be no adverse impact downstream. The staff reports reasoning for permitting the developer to pay a fee in lieu of detention is totally contradictory to the city's requirements and Oklahoma law. And to go through very quickly, I believe the statement contained in the report is based on the property located in the lower bit, in the lower basin and adjacent to the Canadian River. Staff recommends fee in lieu of detention with any final plat. Storm water will be conveyed to the south. Well, so let's break that down. Based on the property located in the lower basin, well. We've heard to that to qualify for a fee in lieu of detention property must be located in the upper portion of the drainage basin. The staff report mentions that the property is in the lower basin, and I believe Mr. Rieger even made a comment to that effect. The report also says that it's adjacent to the Canadian River. It's not adjacent to the Canadian River. My client's property is adjacent to the Canadian River. And any water that's flowing off of that is going through my client's properties being dumped on my client's property. And then the storm water will be conveyed to the south. The statement essentially admits that the developer's fee and lure request is premised upon the developer's belief that the Potts' property is a convenient hassle free dumping ground for its surface water and trash. Furthermore, to qualify for a fee in lieu of detention, the size of the development must be small. This is not a small development. Norman's stormwater master plan references very small developments, less than an acre in size or some other size. Is what it says. The Eagle Cliff West addition, though, is 147 lots over 41 acres. Lastly, to qualify for a fee in lieu of detention, the developer's engineer states in writing that there will be no adverse impact downstream. We haven't seen any sort of statement from any sort of engineer and it's unlikely one can exist without the proper studies and water mitigation studies and hydrological studies. If those exist, we would like to be provided with copies of those. If the statement exists, we'd also like to be provided with a copy of those. The city engineer just said the development increased flooding on our land and adversely impacted our land. So this is impossible. In conclusion, in an attempt to address the increased flow of surface water onto their properties that has occurred over the last nine years. And to ensure the problem would not be further exacerbated by the applicant's most recent round of development. The Potts has attended the predevelopment meeting to express their concerns, namely to state that the development's current plan to only add three detention ponds when there have not been any built into the development in the previous nine years was wholly inadequate. What the developer and what did developer and city do in response? They on the latest preliminary plat, they completely removed all the detention ponds and added additional lots instead. The developer is now seeking a fee in lieu of detention, which expressly premised upon dumping its surface water and stormwater runoff onto the Potts' property. Water that would otherwise be soaked into the ground is instead being shot down onto my client's property. The developer's decision to do so is a blatant violation of Oklahoma law. A blatant violation of the city's own ordinances and requirements for a fee in lieu of detention. And lastly, is a blatant violation of the Potts' rights as landowners. We would ask that you recommend denial of the applicant's request to approve the preliminary plat. Doing so will protect the Potts' land from further damage and save the developer, possibly the engineer and the Potts' from the time and expense of what would be lengthy and protracted litigation. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe we have some additional audience comments. Which if we want to address the people in person, I don't know if we have the zoo attendees. If we can get some assistance lining up for the next comment. It's very fun.
I have a brief comment. My name is Alex Hatton and I live at 505 Talon Drive. That is in Eagle Cliff South and I just wanted to briefly give a perspective from someone who lives here in the neighborhood just adjacent to this proposed development. The first thing I noticed was that there are no new entrances or exits planned for the western portion. And that will effectively triple the traffic on our street. It's really going to change the character of the neighborhood. It really will. And it's a concern. And also the the fee and lieu on the parks may be easier for the city. But it's not necessarily easier for those of us who live here and it would be nice to have some green space. And I noticed in the plan that the only green space in this new development is underneath the the power lines. And so it would be nice if there was a park closer by instead of just putting money in the coffers of another program. And that's that's all I wanted to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Go right ahead.
Yes, I'm this is Kevin Potts. I live at 3620 Bowwick Drive. I'm the one of the property owners down south. I'm third generation. It's been blessed with this land. My grandpa started it. Bought it back in 1960s. My dad. It passed on to him and my uncle Andrew John Potts. And right now we've had, I'm the third generation. We got the fourth and fifth generation in place. So we've got a history of about 60 years of working this property. Making it actually developing it into a pretty reasonable hay operation. And farming is hard. You only got a little bit of time to get things done. You got really tight windows to put up your hay. But more than anything, I just, we just enjoy the scenery. One, Mike Elts that lives up there on Cobblestone. Just right back. He just right there close to where we our northeast entrance. He's been walking it. My dad knew him. I didn't know him until recently. He's been walking the property in that area on the east side since 2005. And he's increasingly seen the stormwater and the floodwater sitting on this our land. And right now, at present. We've got about 40 acres of tall fescue that was already cut about three weeks ago. And it's just sitting in water. It's losing its value. That that 40 acres produce about 200 bales, thousand pound bales valued about $8,000. So we can't do nothing. That stormwater is sitting on us. It's not making, it's costing us. It's having an adverse impact on just our farming operation. And we use that money to maintain the lands. We use that money to clean out Bishop Creek on our own expense, even though it wasn't something we caused. And we understand that water is flowing through the place and we work with it the best we can. And we've done that for three generations. With this development, Eagle Cliff South has moved on south and Cobblestone also. I'm seeing, we're seeing more and more just water sitting on this hay, the hay farm, basically. And it's actually right now, that 40 acres I'm talking about. I don't know if you see this right here. I guess you can. That's up there directly south of section seven. Okay. We can't get in and do what we're supposed to. That's what we do. And so we, like I said, it's very, very disappointing. And it's having an adverse impact on us. And economically. The part of producing that hay.
Thank you very much for your comments, Mr. Potts. Thank you very much. That was the time. I appreciate it. Thank you. Do we have an additional audience comment?
Yes, this is, oh, I can invite for public or okay.
Go ahead while they set up the next public. Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Charles Custer. This is my wife, Emma Custer. We live at 4300 Condor Drive. I just wanted to start by thanking everybody on the commission and appreciate all that you guys do. Our concern, just two quick ones. One is I'm concerned about future residents in this proposed development as well. future residents in this proposed development as well as city infrastructure being placed in a more vulnerable area by building closer to and even within the floodplain. And I say within the floodplain because the floodplain map, as it's been showed, is the hundred year floodplain, which I think is a little bit risky because we're both meteorologists and we look at climate science and we see that the extreme rainfall events are increasing in their frequency and in their magnitude. And so it's likely that the five hundred year floodplain might be the more accurate and resilient and safe thing to look at in terms of future development. So I'm worried about flooding for these residents who are going to be buying in this area and probably not told that they're moving into a floodplain as well as the city infrastructure that's over there. And certainly in safety, and I think Mr. Hatton kind of talked about this, is we don't have a secondary exits out of this neighborhood. And it's been mentioned that this area is just sort of emboldened over time, over time slowly. And now the more homes are going in here, I would be concerned in the event, hopefully never happens, some kind of evacuation is needed for our area, maybe a wildfire, that we all have to funnel out of narrow streets like Talon Drive and Alcaloto. And then everyone in this neighborhood falls out through the twelfth avenue and Cedar Lane intersection. So I'm real concerned about safety, especially as we continue to grow this neighborhood. So that's definitely a concern. I definitely would want to see another exit point out of here if this were to be approved. So I want to thank you all for your consideration and time. That's all here.
Thank you very much. I think we have another public commentator.
Yes, John Cardt in thirty blocks drive. First point I want to make is something that he said about OU. OU's rule breaking doesn't entitle the developer to do the same ever. The river does not run through this part. Bishop Creek flows through it and goes two point two miles before it hits the Canadian River. Its outfall is quite a ways away. In the meantime, it does collect additional water. The river itself, the channel is about one point four miles as the crow flies from this development to the actual river bank. And in between there has been dry land for the most part, except for just the area around Bishop Creek during flood stage for the last fifty to seventy five years. Occasionally, the river will come up over that. It isn't a flood management area, but it's unusual. So the idea that you're going to be waiting around the water all the time is is just not anywhere near the truth. And may I remind everybody that when we're talking about floodwaters and we're talking about detention, that we're really talking about the Clean Water Act. And that water quality is the primary reason for the Clean Water Act. And that's where detention comes in. So the detention does not increase or decrease the total volume of water that comes into this area. It slows its rate. That rate is is related to erosion and erosive forces. And as we saw in another presentation, there's a lot of that going on here that hasn't been touched. What the law requires, and I'm a civil engineer, and I've been doing this twenty five years, is that their flow rate, not the amount of water, but the rate, has to match the undeveloped rate as it comes across their boundary into this property, and that by no means has happened. So the removal of the all of the detention basins is in a direct violation of Clean Water Act. There's really nowhere around it. And for the city engineer to say that in any other way is I don't know how you I don't know how you get away with that. And as far as erosion, the livid sand and clay that that's in this area, it just moves really easy. A little bit of water, it's gone. That's why you're seeing all these these like little canyons forming, you know, because it's a lot of topographic change, a lot of high velocity water. It's got to be slowed down, and that slowed down. That's where the detention bases come in. Now, when you guys decide to pass a fee for it, in my opinion, you also take on the liability. Because if you say, I'm going to take a fee, which means that says you're going to take the risk. Well, the downstream property owners always take the risk. But does that mean that you're going to reimburse the downstream property owners? After all, you got paid for it. They didn't. And they are one of the last remaining family farms in Norman. One, I mean, not the oldest, because some of the oldest, so they're all gone. And also, the city of Norman uses this land, and you may not be aware of that. They land farm on this land.
Thank you so much for your comments. We've hit our time. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Okay, could you give people a warning next time? Thank you.
Do we have another comment from Zoom? And just so all are aware, the the time limit is going to be three minutes for each person. So it's not to interrupt during the speaking. I have not given time updates as we've gone, but if you want to set a timer for three minutes, or I can, if you make the request, I will make the reminder thirty seconds before it's over.
Hello, my name is Sonia Potts, and my address is thirty six twenty Barwick Drive in Norman. And I've heard this land, I'm part of the Potts family, obviously. I've heard this land described as undeveloped land and in a floodplain, but I just want you all to know that this is our family's land. This is not a wasteland down there. There's a farming operation going on. We take our grandchildren down there. We see kids down there, sitting down on the road in Jenkins, having, you know, studying and having picnics. Bird watchers go down there all the time and walk the land. There's all kinds of wildlife down there. We have tons of deer. We have wild turkeys. We have raccoons. We have bobcats. It all kinds of birds you can't even imagine, and it just goes on and on. So it's our land, and that's what I want you all to keep in mind is that we have a huge developer, as in Shaz, and, you know, they're trying to push this development through to our detriment. But we're people and we have families. We have grandchildren. I want to show you a picture. You should have it in all your protest letters. You should have lots of pictures of Bishop Creek and the way it's stopped up and things like that, and the stuff that comes out in the middle of the fields that washes out. Christmas trees, flip flops, just anything you can imagine, trash cans, floaties of kids, basketballs, soccer balls. We get lots of those. That all ends up out in our fields. We pick that up. We physically go out and we ride around and we pick it up. Because we can't, you can't do a hay operation over that. This is an instance, and I hope you can see this. This is a stoppage in Bishop Creek. This is one. There are numerous. This stuff is not coming from our land. It's coming from the city of Norman. It's washing down Bishop Creek. All the time, we find huge trees that have been cut off. We haven't cut them off, but they're there. And the other thing is the hay operation. So as far as the economic impact, for the last three years, the hay operation, they've sold over a hundred thousand dollars in hay sales. So the continuation of this, there is a huge economic impact on our family. So I just want you all just to remember that we're people, we're real people, just like you are. And if this were your land, you would probably be fighting like we are.
Thank you. That is your time, Ms. Potts. Thank you very much.
Thank you all for listening.
Do we have any additional audience comments by Zoom? If we have any additional in person? Leave it open for another moment in case there's anybody else who'd like to make a comment. Thank you very much, and I appreciate everybody. I know that that timeframe can be very frustrating, but for the sake of being able to have time to hear everybody's comments, thank you very much for staying within that timeframe. I'd like to move to Planning Commission discussion.
I'll jump in. Commissioner Williford, I have several thoughts. First, I would like to say that Mrs. Potts was kind enough to invite me to go take a tour of their farm property. And she showed me around Eagle Cliff, several areas in it today. And I would like to say that everything you have seen in the photographs and that has been described to you is accurate. There is a lot of trash in the Eagle Cliff neighborhoods in the particularly in the Road to Nowhere, that they what they call the Road to Nowhere. At the end of it, there was a television, vacuum cleaners, kitty litter boxes. It is absolutely filled with trash. I would be really, I would be frankly disgusted if it was my neighborhood and I live there. The Potts Family Farm is a gorgeous piece of land, and in my opinion, I well, I will be voting against this proposed. I'm losing my words. I will be voting no on this. The Potts Family Farm is gorgeous, and in my opinion, it should be protected. There are not very many properties like this left in Norman. There is value in undeveloped land. Their hay has value. It's personal property. Taking the tour out there is just, I kept thinking in my head, this is what people think of when they think of what Oklahoma looks like. It's gorgeous, and it is really disappointing that everything is draining off into their property. There was the picture that Mrs. Potts showed you is one of many piles of debris. There's one pile of debris that if I was standing there and my husband stood on my shoulders, it would still be taller than both of us. It's just going to fill up and overflow and cause even more flooding. And yes, it is in the floodway, but that doesn't mean that we should vote to let it get worse. We have to protect everyone, not just developers. The city is made up of developers, of single individuals, of farms, of single family homes, of commercial properties, and we all have to work together to make it all work together. And I just hope that everyone will keep that in mind.
This is Commissioner Jablonsky. I'd like to piggyback off of what I'm hearing. I agree, we've got a problem with the way that the developed part of the city is interfacing with the natural part of the city. We don't need to erase that natural part of the city. It's important. I think it's important for people to be connected to nature. I think it's important to hear birds and to see wildlife. And, you know, a lot of the new development I've seen in town, when it when it bumps up against the natural world, it's slash and burn. We saw this in my neighborhood when they started to to fill out the development on the the area that hadn't been developed. They didn't work work with the existing natural world. They literally cut down every tree. I had no idea that you could see OU's campus from my neighborhood until they cut down all the trees. And I thought, oh, my God, what am I saying? I had no idea. I think this is a bad way to develop. I don't think it's good for the city. You know, and, you know, looking back around to the stormwater issue, that's a hundred year floodplain. Why are we seeing pools of water? You know, there's something, there's something not right here, and I think we need to, I think we need to slow down and hit the brakes on this.
I'll just add to that. I think I've seen more developments than not where it wasn't considered whose backyard is where and how high the street was compared to the road or to the backyards in the kind of slopes that some backyards have. You drive up twenty fourth Street East, and you can look down into those neighborhoods that have been developed, and I don't know who the developers are. But I wouldn't want to live in a house that's twenty feet below the street or ten feet below the street and looking at the topographic maps that we saw for the backyards of of some of those houses. Yeah, it's got to stop someplace. Detention's important, runoff's important, erosion's important, and I really don't see anything about this development that's going to protect any of that.
This is Commissioner Zink, and I wanted to echo the the concerns about the floodplain that everyone has been sharing, but also to mention that the the question of access with just one entrance and exit that Mr. Hatton showed is a real concern as well, and and the amount of impact that that would have on traffic if the development is built the way it's projected to be built is is a concern to me as well.
Any more Planning Commission discussion? Seeing none, I would take a motion.
Commissioner Beck, so move.
Commissioner McDaniel, second.
End of vote.
Ms. Bayham?
No.
Ms. Zink?
No.
Mr. Beck?
No.
Mr. Jablonsky?
No.
Ms. Williford?
No.
Mr. McDaniel?
No.
Ms. Byrd?
No.
The motion failed zero to seven.
That looks like our last item. I'll move to miscellaneous discussion and ask if the staff has any information for commission.
Good evening. I just wanted to remind everyone unless something changes, next month, we will be in person. June third is when we, and I'm looking to legal to make sure I'm saying that correctly, but I believe next month we will be in person here in chambers. Correct, Beth?
I actually haven't heard confirmation of that, and so I'll have to check and make sure, but.
Is it going to be required that all commissioners have both shots or single shots before they come back to a meeting log?
Haven't heard that. All right, we'll keep you posted. That was my understanding, but we will keep you posted.
Yeah, I'll check.
And I've got one miscellaneous comment. In my neighborhood, the corner of Alameda and Carter, Carter. They've cleaned out that woods somewhat. That used to be Will Mattoon's land that he donated to the city. And, you know, there's been a lot of controversy and discussion about homelessness and, you know, where are homeless people going to stay? We chased them away from there. In Facebook, there's a lot of people posting about it. My only comments are, we just need to address it. We need to. Gene McCown raised, I think, three or four million dollars and built thirty two units of micro housing along with food and shelter. Granted, he went to everybody in in Norman that makes over two hundred fifty thousand dollars a month. And so it was easy to raise. But we have to address it. I mean, we have homeless needs. And the fact that they were hiding out in the woods that no one could see them, but everybody was complaining that they were there and that Will Mattoon ought to chase them away, or the city ought to chase them away. That's not the way you address homelessness. And so we ought to have an honest conversation about, you know, what we can do to provide more housing for the homeless people in Norman, because we still have a lot of homeless people.
Are there any comments, any more comments for commissioners? And if there's anything else to come before the commission, if not, then I will declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Have a great day. Have a great day.